First item on our agenda tonight is public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to something not on the agenda tonight?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I noticed that one of our neighboring towns had, I don't know if they passed an ordinance or say a resolution, but to condemn political violence, most likely in light of the seditious treasonous act that happened on January 6th. I was wondering how the board of selectmen felt about what happened that day.
Well, I think the Democrats on the board have issued our statement on the website. But if there's anybody else who would like to speak from the board.
Well, people who break the law deserve to be imprisoned or whatever appropriate. Whatever is appropriate, whoever they are, wherever they are. And that that incident is no different than any of the other instances that occurred during the summer. Those people should be in jail as well. I make no distinction between the two. They both, they both did something that's stupid should not be done and they should be punished for it. End of statement.
I'm not quite as nice as Bob. What I would do to those people can't be said in this forum. And that stretches right from the idiot that was breaking the window. Or I won't say idiot, something way, way, way beyond idiot. It was breaking the window with the police shield, right to the putz who stood out in front of the White House earlier that day and incited those idiots. I think from him all the way to the last one should have been arrested that day. And I can't believe they'll ever, ever let any of them leave the Capitol grounds without putting them in a box trailer and hauling them off to San Quentin. I'm just, nothing since nine 11 has infuriated me to this extent. And I, you know, castration is not good enough for them. I'm sorry. I just, I have, I have no words to describe just how angry I am about that.
Well, that's actually good. And I'm glad you, glad you held back.
Yeah, you can't believe the things I've said about this. I am being very, very mild right now, honest.
You're not the only one, I'm sure.
I, I'm glad my father and father-in-law, who served in World War II, weren't around to see this.
Yeah, that's kind of how I thought too. My uncle Bob Toomey was a paratrooper and, you know, was all the, into the Battle of the Bulge.
Yep, yeah. Thank God they didn't see this because it would have destroyed those two guys that I know.
Well, that, that in the pandemic, I'm glad my parents didn't have to live through that.
Yep.
Much as I miss them, it's one thing I couldn't imagine, not to see that happen.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Kim, do you now have your sound?
I'm good. I'm back. I don't know what happened. It just disappeared.
Sometimes the internet does that for you. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of February 2nd. I've been through them and didn't find any additions or corrections, so I will move their approval.
I'll second that.
So it's been moved and seconded. Did anybody find any additions or corrections?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Yvonne, thank you. You've captured the discussion very, very well. Um, moving on appointments, I don't believe we have any tonight. Is that correct, Josh?
We don't have any appointments to act on tonight, no.
Okay. I do want to mention to the public that we are still accepting applications for the diversity committee. And to find out more about that, you can reach out to townadmin@boltonct.org. Or check on the town website. There's a page for diversity on the town's website. Correspondence, I have none. Josh?
I have none.
Excellent. Moving right along, we're up to item six, subcommittee reports.
There has been one meeting of a subcommittee since the last time we convened as a full board. And that was the Human Resources Subcommittee met actually the very next day on Wednesday, February 3rd at 2:00 PM. And the minutes are included within your packet for your perusal at a later date.
And just up as a follow of that, Bob Moore and Josh and I, excuse me, met with the union reps, delivered our initial offer, and we are waiting to hear back from them with either a counter or a different offer. Properties and Facilities report.
I have nothing new to report on this item. I, I do also know that for the next item, Gwen Marion does happen to be on the call with us tonight. Gwen, I don't know if you have anything to report on open space management or acquisition.
Under properties and facilities, Josh, though, I just wanted to mention that the Heritage Farm Commission has identified a vendor for the historical signs for Heritage Farm, which are being funded by the Department of the Interior as part of the Washington Rochambeau Revolutionary Route.
That's a very good point. Thank you, Sandy.
Open space management. Gwen, did you have something you wanted to speak with us about?
Oh, I just, the last, the, the one open item, and Josh and I touched on this together briefly in a, in a conversation, is that we need to get the, some, we need to nail down the, the trailhead to the Nathan Hale Corridor off of Route 6. And I, I think that we're waiting for the snow to disappear so that the exact boundary lines of where the state, the state right of way is. I think that's what the next, the next step is. But I, that is, that is important because there are more and more people who are using that property. And people are starting to map it and people are starting to say, oh, you know, there, there's some land there. And so it, it would, in my mind, it's better to move toward getting that to be a legitimate parking area. And then, and, and announce it as a legitimate parking area before people just starting to, start to use it casually. But I, I do think it's the right spot to use as the trailhead. The other thing I wanted to mention is that Patrice Carson and Ken Geisler, former Bolton resident, and I had a conversation yesterday and I'm going to be, Ken and I are going to be helping out on that four-town consortium about doing the, an open space map and a guide and, you know, that, that whole effort. So I'm, I'm happy to help with that. And one thing that Patrice mentioned during that conversation was that she thought that there was a timber harvest that was being done on the Nathan Hale Corridor in Coventry. And that was the first time I had heard about that. And she said she thought it was going to expand into Bolton. First time I've heard about it. And I, I just think that that, that takes a lot of planning. It takes a lot of monitoring. It takes careful execution. So I would appreciate having some information about like where, where that's going to be and like where they're going to access the property, what kind of a cut it is. Is it, is it, is it just for its management? Or is it, is it for revenue? Or so if you could provide any, any information to me about that, I would appreciate it.
Well, I have not heard anything about either the Coventry portion or the Bolton portion. And a timber harvest should have gone to inland wetlands first, and it has not. So Josh, can you follow up with Eric Trotter in Coventry and see what we can find out about that?
Yep, you've got it.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Gwen. Fiscal 21 budget report, Josh?
Absolutely. First and foremost, the expenditure report, which is on screen for those of you who are joining us by video. We do, as always, have a number of different items that have been identified as fixed annual costs, including auditing, property insurance, probate, et cetera. And we have one item that has been identified as a, a budget of, of note, which in this case for this month is land use. And this is because the land use department is currently 68.08% expensed, which compared to the last three fiscal years is slightly higher, more than 1% over expended compared to those three prior fiscal years. And it is also more than two-thirds expense, two-thirds because we've now completed eight out of 12 months in the fiscal year. So this is not a concern of, of mine at this point in time. We do know that we have a variable cost in there, given the Director of Community Development, who has continued to have very consistent working time within Town Hall. And later on in the year, we will be adjusting those hours to make sure that that budget comes in as expected and with, with no increased surprises. Beyond that, as you can see, the bottom line is very clear. We're having our, we're, we're beating expectations compared to prior years, I suppose, I should say, with a 52.7% expenditure rate as of February 28th, 2021. And we are now at a point in time where I've, I've contacted a number of different department heads. We're at a point where I feel that we can make some of the larger expenditures that we've been holding off on as a result of just the uncertainty of this fiscal year and the, and not knowing what really what the pandemic would bring. But we're at a point where we can make some of those larger expenses and make sure that folks are getting the equipment and materials that need to really springboard and, and have a great fiscal year 2022. So those are, expenses are, are now occurring. I think you'll see that number bump up a little bit more for the, for, for the next meeting that we hold together.
Josh?
Yes.
Do we still have money coming, is there outstanding money coming in for our land use people from other towns?
There is, absolutely. But, and, and that does offset on the backend, but we don't actually have the funds that we receive from those other towns get placed directly into these different budgets.
No, I, I just mean, we have, we still have money coming in to kind of offset where, where we are.
Exactly. Yes, we do.
Okay. So we're not, it's not as bad as it looks when you take that into consideration.
No, and actually with the onboarding of Andover as a new client of ours through the Building Official program, we, we actually have more money coming in this year than we expected.
So we're now sharing building officials with Ashford, Wellington, and Andover?
That's correct.
As well as Bolton. And the other, I don't know about Andover, but Ashford and Wellington are very happy with the relationship.
Yes.
Okay, tax collectors report.
Tax collectors report is on screen for those of you who are, are able to see. For those of you who aren't, the current year levy is now collected at 100.37%. We are struggling in, in just a couple of areas, but the total bottom line collection rate is 99.4%. And I know that Lori, especially given the pandemic and especially given the fact that not all, or the, the supplemental, supplemental motor vehicle levy isn't actually due yet. That, that Lori's feeling confident that we'll reach that 100% mark by the end of the fiscal year. And that will be in a very stable financial place.
Questions on the tax collectors report? We're very lucky to have Lori. I just got an update from Jim Rupert, our Emergency Management Director, that we are now down to just one house without power. So EverSource is doing an outstanding job this time. Let's see. Consider and act on budget transfers and appropriations. This is spending some of that money we talked about.
Yes, it is. You have five different transfers for your consideration tonight. The first two will come from the library. The first one is $350 from the library dues and fees, and it's going into the professional education and training. The rationale is that given some new online courses that are being taken this year by members of the library staff that haven't been taken before, it's the auditor's recommendation and thereby the, well, our finance director's recommendation that these costs be transferred into a new line. The library doesn't currently have a professional education and training line. But given that this is becoming a more regular and formal expenditure, this would be the correct way to document these expenses. So that's the first, and if it's all right with everybody, I'm going to go through all five and then you can make a motion.
I have a question in that whole thing. Since we don't have a line like that, why the hell are we doing it in the middle of the budget process? We simply don't do it for next year.
Because our auditor won't issue his report unless we do it. He's holding us hostage.
That's a good, okay. I, I didn't understand why.
Yeah, we had an involved conversation the other day.
Okay, don't say no more. Thank you.
Like telling another appraiser their numbers are wrong.
The second proposed transfer is into the library other professional services line, and it's coming from the library materials line within the same budget. And the rationale is that, that COVID-19 has really placed an emphasis on trying to get people engaged and involved while they're home. The library staff and Liz Thornton, the Director of Library Services, is hopeful that she can have an extra $500 to be added to the other professional services line for programming as opposed to collecting more materials for the library when library services and the interior visits to the library are overall down as compared to prior years. So she feels that the money would be better spent on those programs rather than on more books at this moment in time. The third item is $4,500 to, and, and my, my request is that it be transferred into other technical services from the professional and technical services line. And the rationale being, and the other technical services line, I should, I should just preface for everybody on the call, is where we pay all of our different IT costs out of. And right now, the town is working on something that I'm very excited on. We're installing a portal on everyone's computer. This is through the Tyler software that we have, the Tyler financial software. And we're installing it on everyone's computer, and it's going to allow department directors to see their budget expenditures in real time. It's going to allow us to have purchase orders as well as requests for payments to be made online. And it's going to allow for online time entry to occur. And the installation costs for that are more than we had budgeted last year into other technical services because this is a new service that we're going to be able to bring online. There are no continuing fees, just so that you all know, this isn't going to increase our costs for Tyler next year. It is a one-time cost. And I, as you can see with our budget, we, we do have the money. And our savings in other areas can easily fund the completion of this project. The third item is, or sorry, the fourth item is in highway wastewater removal. Lance is requesting $3,000 to be added to the wastewater removal line and have it come from the road repair line. The rationale being that they need more for wastewater removal due to needing to wash trucks after many storms and being very covered in salt and so forth. That's very.
Josh, can I make a comment on this?
Sure.
Or Sandy, can I make a comment? I should be addressing it to you. As I was reading this this afternoon, I was thinking about this particular line item. And being friendly to our environment is important to me. But what we're doing here is paying to have water that washed salt off the trucks after they come back from dumping salt on the roads, which goes down the catch basins and into the streams and rivers and everything. I don't completely understand this. We, we take this material from the town garage, we spread it on our town streets, and it can go anywhere it wants when it rains. But we have to pick up the water from the same exact material that comes off our truck in very, very minor amounts compared to the tonnage that we're putting on the roads. And I know that this is an environmental protection requirement and all that stuff. But it doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever when you get maybe a, what? Couple thousand gallons of water that's got some salt in it from the trucks when we dump 100 tons or more of salt on our roads every year and then millions of gallons of water fall out of the sky and wash that into the streams and brooks. So it's, this is more of an editorial comment on this particular item. It makes no sense whatsoever.
Mike, I intend to do that to prevent premature rotting of the truck.
Yep, and, and I, I agree with washing them. I just don't understand why we have to collect a few hundred gallons that come off when we wash the salt off our trucks. But it's okay to dump over 100 tons of salt on the road and millions of gallons of rainwater push that into our streams and in our environment. Something is wrong with this system.
Sandy, you've blocked.
I know. Thank you. DEP says that you need to get the wash, catch the wash water because you could be washing petroleum particles from your exhaust system, your engine, and your hydraulic system into the water. But I think the chance of doing that is very small. So I'm kind of on your boat, Mike.
On, on that same token, if you've ever watched after they've paved a road and it rains, you can literally watch the oil running into the catch basins by the hundreds of gallons. And because they just put oil on top of the environment. And, and we might catch a couple of gallons of oil off the bottom of a truck. Environmental protection has got their priorities all screwed up.
Unfortunately, this was one of those that one size fits all. And, and there was no, when they, when they did it, it really did not think it through. There are circumstances where this, this situation works. But for the, for the majority, like small operations such as us, it's overkill to the extreme.
Yes. When you, when you compare it to the hundreds of tons of salt that we allow to go into the environment every year on purpose and hundreds of gallons of oil off the roads that we pave in town on purpose, and they want us to pick up a couple of pounds of salt and maybe a gallon of oil. I'm, I, I, and it just doesn't make sense. The, their priorities are in the wrong place.
I agree. Josh, I have a question for you on the Tyler installation.
Yes.
I think it's a really great idea that the department heads will be able to watch their own budgets in real time. I think that'll make everybody's life a little bit easier. But I know Tyler is not the most user-friendly software. Have we made provisions for training for these folks?
Yes, this transfer will include all of the time, all the costs that are in some of that training. We do get some free training time, but I did actually ask Tyler to make sure that they're spending a little bit more quality time because I don't want this to go unused. It's a really bad expenditure if we are investing in software and we're investing in a mild amount of training. That's going to get a couple of people using the software. But if we can go the extra step and make sure that absolutely everyone is aware of the software's existence, its capabilities, and how to make the best use of it, I think you're going to not only find that this is a great investment, but I think that you're going to find that it's really an investment that keeps on giving. It's going to save a lot of time. It's going to save a, a lot of man-hours and in turn money for the town.
I think that, I think it's a great move. So thanks for that. Any other questions on these budget transfers?
There's one last budget transfer. It's very small, just $68 to cover one outstanding bill that we have. And that's in for the fire commission. We need $68 in office operating supplies. I did, this is a relatively late addition to the lineup here, for those of you who are looking a bit earlier in the day. But I did call the chief and he let me know that we could take that out of the equipment line.
Now I'll make a motion to move, we accept the transfers as presented.
Is there a second?
I think Bob DiPietro just had his hand up, Sandy.
Oh, I, I can't see him. Thank you, Bob DiPietro, for seconding. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. That is unanimous. I don't believe we have any other at this point. The Board of Selectmen's budget approval.
That is, for those of you who are, are joining us via video, I can say just a few words to the board. All of the changes that were recommended last week have been made in this budget. And then there were, I know, two other items beyond the list that Jill and I had given you that we were going to follow up on. The first of those is health insurance. And Sandy, I can talk as much or as little as you'd like on that subject, or certainly you can.
Let, let me take it over and just keep me honest here. We've included in this budget, we've reduced the health insurance to 17%, which is a little bit more than the cost that we anticipate on a standalone basis. At this point, it appears that CT chip will be dissolving. So we will be on a standalone basis. There is, and, and that 17% is in this budget. We also had our insurance consultant go out and look at some other vendors for us, all which come in under the 17%. And as much as I hate the thought of going to the state partnership plan, I can't ignore that there's almost a 20% fee difference in charges between the 17% increase we've budgeted and a 3% decrease we would experience in 2021, 22 by going to the state partnership plan. We've had these conversations with the Superintendent of Schools. She is taking a potential change to her unions. And Josh has scheduled a meeting tomorrow with the presidents of our unions to see if they agree with the change. I know we've talked about this before, and I know that the board was uncomfortable as a group with the state partnership plan. But I can't in good conscience walk away from a 20% savings.
You can.
On that, Sandy, that's the, in your, so I understand it properly, maybe I'm missing something. If, if we go out on the open market, it, it means that we would have a about 17% increase, correct?
Correct.
That's not over and above what we budgeted. That's a 17% that we did.
That's a 17% increase over last year's expenditures.
Yeah, but, but we, but you, but we, we budgeted that. That's in our, our original budget process, right?
That's in the budget right now.
Right. Why I ask that, I mean, that, that, to me, that would be the safe thing to keep it in there because no matter, this way we know when we go forward. But didn't, didn't, didn't Josh add in additional $54,000 over and above that because we thought?
Originally, we had 23% because that's what we thought CT chip was going to look like without the town of Thompson. We've now got better quotes so that we're comfortable with 17%. Josh, go ahead.
Sorry, just to clarify, Bob. So the, the budget that you've been looking at this whole time is the 17%? At our last meeting last week, I brought in an addition that would bring us up to the 23%.
Right.
But now we're keeping it at that 17%.
Okay, so what, what you have here is, is the original 17%. I just want to make that clear. Thank you. That's all.
Correct. And just for informational purposes, the Board of Education is also submitting their budget with the 17% in there because there is the possibility that the unions, we both need union buy, a majority of unions to buy in. And without that buy-in, we can't make. Um, and without that buy-in, we can't make a change.
So what is the, I don't know anything about the state plan, so I apologize for that. Like, why is it such a, oh my gosh, we don't want to do that? Are there, um, significant negatives?
Go out on the Connecticut Mirror and read some of the editorials about the Connecticut Partnership Plan. It's unfunded, it's, um, being subsidized by tax, by Connecticut taxpayers. And, um, the opinion of many professionals is that it's unsustainable at its current rates. So, um, if we sign on with the state partnership plan, we're in for a minimum of three years. But if our increases become significant, we can leave without penalty. And our insurance advisor, um, is recommending that we try it. It is not a high deductible health plan. It is a traditional indemnity plan with copays. Mike?
Okay, and?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Kim.
No, no, you go.
Oh, I was just about to say that, uh, I agree with you completely about your concerns about it being underfunded and, and everything else. But the one thing that surprised, that that would lead me that way is since it's being funded by taxpayers as opposed to the towns or the people that are in, in it, and we're taxpayers, why don't we take advantage of a plan that we're paying for anyway?
And, um, I also came to that realization with twenty percent savings waving a flag very, very highly.
I, yeah, I think, yeah, you're making a good. Yes.
So, and then you said, um, if the costs go up too much, then we have the option of leaving. What is that? Is there a threshold? There must be something defined.
Josh, I don't remember what that threshold was.
Okay.
I can't remember what the exact threshold is. I can send that to the board, uh, when I have the chance to talk with Jill about it more specifically tomorrow. Um, but I, I do know that once we reach a certain threshold of increase, the state does have a clause that's baked into, um, a, a number of, of its agreements that it's already made with other towns that we would copy. Uh, that will allow us to explore options that are of a, an equal or lesser value. So basically, as long as the state's plan remains the lowest option, we would be required to stay in the three years. But if we can prove to them that there is a cheaper option for us, they will let us go without penalty.
Okay, and when we say it's underfunded, we're, we're not putting ourselves at risk. We're hurting the state, right? Okay.
And I think the, the better way to say it is actually vastly overfunded by the state. Um, it, it's, it's underfunded by the actual towns that are part of the partnership plan.
Right, right.
He's making up that difference. So in no way are we putting ourselves in any sort of liability here. Um, but rather we're, we're, there's a subsidy, and right now we're not taking advantage of it, but if we switched into the plan, we would.
Thank you, Josh, for that explanation. I think it's a, put much better than I did.
Well, we, we won't be making a real decision on that until a, a couple of weeks anyways, until you, I mean, you
I, I think we, my suggestion is that we go to the Board of Finance with the seventeen percent because without the union buy-in, which, I mean, we're make, they're making the introductions to supervisors tomorrow. And then it has to go to union membership. So, you know, we're probably talking two to three weeks before we can even make that decision for sure. So, and I think it's
Portion.
I, I really would like to go to the Board of Finance with a reduced budget, but I'd rather walk in and say, look, we've been able to reduce it to this.
Yep.
Um, and we're, we're still working on it, so.
You're, you're taking the safe route, which is smart.
Thank you for that.
So, so as you're looking at this budget in front of you, and I'll put it back on the screen, um, you are seeing that three point three two total town proper increase, which is a number that's relatively familiar given what we've been looking at. Um, I can tell you that if we end up going with the state partnership plan, that would, that would definitely drop below two percent. Um, I, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but, um, you, you see a sizable savings. Uh, and, um, and certainly that's a, a change that the Board of Finance can make later on. Uh, the other follow-up item that I really wanted to note because, uh, Bob Moore, I believe, had asked me where money was coming from and where it would be allocated for the reevaluation that's occurring next year. And the answer to that question, uh, Jill and I did a little homework on the background uh, for one of the budget lines that exists in the, sorry, I'm not going to, I'll pause that for just a second so I don't give you all whiplash as I scroll through the budget. We did a little homework on the administration budget, and we noted that the official administrative services, it's something that, uh, you know, this current year is being funded at thirty-six thousand dollars. And, uh, in two thousand twenty, very little was spent out of it, and that's true of most years. What we found is that it's very, uh, well expended in our revaluers. So what I've done is I have zeroed this budget out in, and it was a twenty-five thousand dollar request. And that has been moved down at this point in time to the capital reserve budget. And what that, by capitalizing this item, we are going to have the opportunity to roll into next year, and that will make sure that we don't have a very inflated, uh, request for next year. And I, I did get some numbers from our, our assessor. She believes that it will cost about forty-five, that, oh, sorry, about forty-five thousand dollars in order to conduct reevaluation. So this year, if we fund it at twenty-five thousand dollars, we'll actually be able to drop it to twenty next year to fund the whole thing. And then after that, you should be able to drop it to about a, somewhere between an eight and a ten thousand dollar level um, each year in capital, to make sure that in no year do you have one single jump to fund the reevaluation costs. Um, so hopefully that's something that, that, um, really helps the town in the future. Uh, but I did want you to know, it's not really a reduction of twenty-five thousand dollars. It's just moving twenty-five thousand dollars from the administration line down into capital reserve, but it will allow it to be transferred into next year's budget.
Good, thank you.
No problem. Uh, but this is the budget as it's presented. If you have any suggested, um, changes, certainly announce the time to discuss them or, or any other questions before you vote.
Well, I think, uh, because we have a significant amount in flux. You know, I, I think it would be premature for us to do any nickel and diming this early into the process. As much as I, you know, I want it to be under three, um, I think when we're all said and done, we probably will, but I, we have to err on the side of caution. And with that, I, I would suggest we go forward, uh, initially with this, and we can readjust it as, uh, our figures come in.
Is that a motion, Bob?
That is a motion, as I rambled on, I apologize.
No problem. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Kim. Somebody said Sandy. I didn't.
Yeah, i- it's Mike. I, I would like to, uh, well, when you call for a vote, I'd like two seconds to say something, that's all.
Okay. Um, any further discussion? This is the time to say something. Mike?
Uh, it's, it's appropriate when you call for the vote, that's all.
When you call for the vote, okay?
You'll, you'll understand completely in, in about two seconds.
Right.
So can I ask a question?
Yes.
Can I just ask a question? So, um, how, how does this actually work in terms of if we find out that the health insurance is less later? Do we submit an update to the Board of Finance, or do they just make decisions and then we fit within whatever budget they give us?
I would, uh, send a letter to the Board of Finance that says we've made a change in our insurance carrier and we anticipate the savings in Personnel Services will be X number of dollars.
Okay, I got it.
And then they would make that change.
Okay.
Okay. Josh, can you pull up the, um, summary that has the debt and capital reserve in it? Here it is. Um, the capital reserve that we're proposing, uh, oh, go, go back to bond and note for a second. Um, we have an eight point nine two percent here increase in bond and note. The thirty-four percent increase, um, is due to the fact that we are current, the Board of Education is currently budgeting for less Columbia students for next year. And the tuition for the Columbia students funds the bond and note payments. Um, so that's a significant change there. And then the bond and note interest decrease of thirteen point one five percent um, reflects the savings in addition to the fact that the, the note balance is going down and therefore the interest goes down. This also reflects, um, the next year's portion of the about hundred and sixty thousand dollars of savings we're going to have over the next ten years um, as a result of the refinancing to two percent bonds that we completed, uh, two weeks ago now. So, can we move on to capital, please? Um, the capital reserve request is an increase of five point oh five percent. And capital improvement, um, is an increase of thirty-eight percent, but most of that, uh, you'll remember from the discussion of actually all of that is the increase due to the money we're setting aside for the, um, reval. So that's moving from another part of the budget to another. So that gives us an overall budget increase of six point three percent. Which is kind of way higher than I'd like it to be. So if we can get the insurance down, there's nothing we can do about Columbia tuition. Um, and
That tends to vary, doesn't it?
It has, in my time here, trended downward.
Pardon me?
It, it does fluctuate. In my time here, it has trended downward.
Right, I think, like, just the population, um, yeah. Yep. Thanks, Josh.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to, um, approve expenditures of general government of a three point three percent increase and total expenditures of six million four hundred ninety-three, four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Um, is there any other discussion on this?
So, I'm sorry, I, I do have another question. So I'm just thinking, sorry, I'm half-thinking while words are coming out of my mouth. So I'm just thinking about like, if it was our own budget and tightening up as much as possible, right? Like, if we were, if we were set, if we were told you have to go to three percent, we could figure out how to do it, right? I mean, we might not like it, but we could figure out. So is it fine? Like, this is our first offer and then we have discussions later? Or should we really try to tighten it up now and say, this is the best we could do? And I, I feel like I should probably know the approach, but it's been sort of flat the past couple of years, so we haven't really had to have a lot of the tougher discussions. So I'm just wondering what other people's opinion is it? Like, are people comfortable?
Well, that's a good question, and, and, and we've always, and I, you know, obviously in discussing this thing, and I've dealt with an, a, a number of budgets. The, the, the difficulty here is the uncertainty is, is, uh, what we're gonna be paying for healthcare. And that's, and that's, you know, if it was a small number, you, you, you know, you could work, but it is, it's a significant number. And, uh, where that number lies really sets the stage of where, where we can move on other budgets and, and, and the amount. For me, if we can end up with, uh, a two percent um, in, in your, um, increase in expenditures, and with a year in which if we've been watching our, our, our numbers pretty well, we can come forward with a reasonable unexpended, uh, funds that we could put forward, you still have the potential of having a pretty level as far, as far as the, the tax rate. It all, it, it really results in a tax rate. I'm not a, I mean, obviously, I'm not a proponent of increasing administrative costs, but, um, this one level, this one cost has always been the the most difficult things to work in your budget effectively and try and keep costs down. We, we've been, depending on, you know, how budgets fly, move through, we get voted down two and three times, you end up cutting a hundred dollars here, five hundred dollars there.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Well, but, but that's because you don't have that large number to deal with, and here we do, and we're not, we're not quite sure where that's gonna be, as, as Sandy noted. Um, even if we, even if we don't end up going to the state, there's a good possibility that we might even be a bit under the seventeen. We might have something there, but we don't know. I mean, that's
Yeah, yeah.
We're talking numbers that brings us, that's almost one whole, one percent of our budget. And that's, and that's, that's just a gigantic number to and I hate it. I, I freaking hate it, but
Just for the increase, yeah, it's crazy.
And, and you don't know. You, you just don't know if that's gonna, if that's gonna happen. If you can make it happen, well, everything else just falls in place. And then you, you want to make some minor adjustments, you can, uh, but to do it now.
Yeah.
Because you don't, you just don't know where you want to, where you want to sacrifice.
Yeah, okay, I hear ya. And, and the other thing that I had thought about till like last year, Josh and Jill had done an excellent job, right, of tightening up. What do we really need? Let's get those budgets realistic. So they tightened up a lot of places much closer to the needed expenditure. So we weren't asking for money that we didn't need, right? But what sort of happened is that last year, we sort of got the double benefit because we had the excess of those budgets from the year prior. And then when we went into the year, the, the budgets were smaller. So we got that double benefit last year. We sort of pay for it now, right? Because now, because now we don't have that excess. So now people feel the increase where it was sort of hidden last year.
Remember, Kim, last year, I, I brought this up that
Did you bring it up?
Yep. If, if we cut last year, what happens is our surplus next year gets smaller. And we're, we're kicking the can down the road, so to speak. But, you know, if you have a hundred and fifty thousand left over last year, you should, you know, presumably you'd have a hundred and fifty to give to the budget next year and a hundred and fifty to give to the year following that.
Right, right.
But if you don't have that hundred and fifty because you cut this year so fine, then you've, you've kicked the can down the road for a double increase next year, just like you just said. The other thing is, if, i- if you were able to budget with a, a crystal ball, your budget should come in at the end of the year with not a dime left over and not a dime spent too much. And that would be perfect budgeting, and that would mean that you asked for exactly the right amount of money. But we don't have a crystal ball, and we can't foresee COVID, and we can't foresee, well, we could have received COVID. But we can't foresee some natural disasters and things that would affect it, or, you know, number of students dropping out, or, you know, a bad winter. We can't predict all of those things. So there is not a cushion, but there's a safety element built into the budget. And when we go down the road a month or so and start cutting that safety element, it does two things. We don't have the safety, and we kick the can down the road to the next year, like you were just talking about.
Yeah.
So it, it, you know, I don't want to go in with a high budget. This is a realistic budget based on the information we have today.
I do want to share just some information with you all that might help to contextualize and make you feel better about any decision that you make. Um, but I did just pull the numbers up. If we do end up going with the state's plan, and of course, that's, that's nowhere near settled, as Sandy said. Um, but that would leave the town proper increase request, increased request to one point six seven percent. And it would leave the total, which includes capital and debt as well as town proper, to a two point seven three percent increase. Um, so, so my two cents is that if you start nickel and diming, uh, without knowing the context of the health insurance, be needlessly doing that when, when a one point six seven percent is, is pretty reasonable and realistic. Um, the, the other item that The the other item that I wanted to share with you all is that I I actually think as you look forward to the next year, this coming year might be the year that you see the biggest benefit from rolled over money. And of course, it's not the intention to have that ability and to roll over a a larger amount of money, and nor am I saying that there will be. But if there ever was a year where we budgeted for one type of activity and then a very different type of activity ended up occurring, it's it's this year. Last year, we saw it a little bit where the last few months, certainly April, May, and June, were very different with the way that we used our buildings and we did see some savings there. This has been a full fiscal year, and certainly we've been using facilities to a a larger extent than we did in May, in April, May, and June last year. But it is different. You are going to see some level of savings because of that. And I I wouldn't count that out yet as a possible way to help ensure and have the Board of Finance ensure that the tax rate isn't going up for residents next year. But more to come on that, of course, as we get closer to that date.
Okay. Yeah, that was helpful. I I'm more comfortable. I think just that that like double whammy of we don't have the surplus, you know, and we didn't raise the budget for two years, I don't think, right? I think the mill rate stayed the same for two years. So all we're doing, as Mike so eloquently put it, is pushing the can down the road, but at some point we have to pay. And and here we are. So I I'm okay for now, then. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions before I call for the vote? Okay, I'm going to call people as they appear on my screen. Bob DiPietro?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mike Aramita?
Uh, I'm going to vote aye on everything except Budget Twenty Fire Commission. And I intend to abstain specifically on Budget Five One Five One Zero Payroll and Five Five Nine Zero Zero Proficiency Fund, because I directly monetarily benefit from those two lines. So I'm aye, aye in an abstention on the Fire Commission.
Bob Mora?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mike. I unders- fully understand and appreciate your comments. So that is unanimous with Mike Aramita's abstention on the Fire Commission budgets. Okay, now on to the Capital Improvement Plan proposal. At our last meeting, we had some folks come to us to talk about the track. This afternoon, about two o'clock, we got some numbers on the track, which, if I can find them, said that adding the track would increase the repairs to the soccer field to just under two point three million. And currently, many papers in front of me.
Meaning the total cost of the soccer fields and the track would go from one point five to two point three, really?
Well, like I said, we just got this this afternoon. I haven't had any opportunity to flesh out these numbers. My first reaction is that they're too good to be true.
Yeah.
Because if it's going to cost one point five million to just put some drainage and fill in the soccer field for seven hundred thousand, we can build a six lane track. But like I said, we just got that this afternoon.
Sandy, didn't didn't they tell us that the the drainage would cover the proposed or the potential track area as well? Soccer field. So we're making, we're taking advantage of of that portion and looking at it, the the soccer field thing without the track involved, it's like we're spending money needlessly to cover the area that we might not put a track in. So it it almost makes sense to go forward with the project covering the the, you know, putting the track in because we're we're draining for it anyway. And it does seem like a good price, you know, borrow, you know, when you take out the the drainage, putting a track in is a fairly involved process. It's not just leveling the ground and spreading some cinders and it's it's a pretty big deal to put a track around that field.
Yeah, it's gotta be level and flat and everything else.
And it's got to stay stable. And we know from our tennis courts, yeah, nothing stays stable around here. So it's it's going to be a fairly involved project. And it does, you know, it's a lot of money, but it it's less than I would have expected.
Yeah, definitely.
What was seven hundred and something? Is that what it was you said?
Yeah, like seven hundred and thirty, I want to say. Seven.
Too good to be true. It really does. I mean, if you think about the tennis courts where six hundred and fifty thousand, right? I'd be shocked at the track.
We're already covering the drainage portion of it in the soccer field. So we're we're making, you know, a little bit of it's being absorbed anyway, but it is, it does seem like a good price. It really does.
Yeah, because I think originally the track we're talking about a million three.
Something.
I think so, too.
You know, a standalone track, you know, for sure, because you got to do all the drainage and everything. But, you know, we're going to be doing excavation and everything. So is it from the same contractors or?
This is, this bid came from Nathan Jacobs and Joe Dillon, our town engineer.
Oh, okay.
So it's not, it's not a contractor's bid. And Joe did caveat his communication to us by saying that contractors right now are very hesitant to quote this kind of project due to economic uncertainties.
I will say, hey, I actually had the opposite reaction when I saw the the paper come in front of me. I thought that it was in addition to the one point four nine million. So I called Joe very quickly, got him on the phone, and and he explained to me that this is an increase. But he did confirm for me verbally that this is not a typo. This is truly where he believes the market is and and where it will come in. And this does also include a ten percent contingency and so forth.
That's a significant thing, too.
Yeah. So if this board is comfortable adding this track cost to the Capital Improvement Plan and adding the seven hundred and thirty to potential bonding costs, I don't see any reason to reconvene the Kappa Committee to include it.
As much as I hate to spend money, I am comfortable with it.
I I I'm quite frankly, I I think the Kappa Committee would have approved it anyways.
I I agree. Especially with the price we got, if it's going to be three million dollars, I was going to have difficulty voting for it. But at this level, while we're doing that amount of work at the school, I think it's prudent to just get it done.
Quite frankly, the the ultimate decision is made by the taxpayers.
Exactly. Exactly. So I take it that there is no objection. Josh, are you pulling up the Kappa Summary Plan?
Um, it should be on your screen.
Mine is spinning.
Yeah, mine's spinning too. Now I have people.
Yeah, me too.
My apologies.
That's okay. I think
There we go.
They must be putting that last house online. All our juice. Okay. Yes, it is. Thank you. So this would take the soccer fields from one four nine zero to two two seven six.
Do we want to put it that way or do we want to put it as a separate line item?
I'm fine with a separate line item. We just don't have the write-up to go with it, but we certainly could add a separate line item.
I, you know, I'm just curious. It's, I'm not suggesting it or anything. I just.
So you have it here listed as four, as fifty-eight?
So just a suggestion because the.
High school track, yeah, sorry.
Fifty-eight was written before we actually had that proposal. I would recommend that we amend item number forty to include the high school track and to have a new total attached to it, because we, it would be hard to parse out which costs are directly associated with the track and the track's drainage as opposed to the soccer field and the soccer field's drainage.
So you're going to rename that one as high school, soccer field and track?
Correct.
I can live with that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yep.
Okay. I'm good with that. So that makes item forty-two-two-seven-six. And the bonded money now goes to
Three point one, something like that, close.
While Sandy's doing that, there is one other item that needs to be included in a motion to approve, which is a request to add twenty-five thousand dollars in assessing costs or reevaluation costs as a project.
Oh, here?
Yes. Which would become item fifty-eight.
Okay.
Would that be included in task, taxpayer ask or bonding?
Taxpayer ask.
Okay.
Right. Which was reflected in the budget that was approved.
Okay.
I miss Jill.
Yes, I do.
That brings the bonded monies to three million two hundred and one thousand five hundred. And the taxpayer ask six eight two four eight six five eight four. And I will move that we adopt the total capital improvement at three million three hundred eighty-one thousand five hundred with a bonded money of actually, that's not the right number. Two four nine two nine. Of three million six twenty-seven five hundred. A total of bonded monies of three million three hundred eighty-one thousand five hundred and a taxpayer ask of four eighty-six, five eighty-four, subject to change for by bad math.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion on the capital? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote again as people appear on my screen. Bob DiPietro?
Nay.
Kim Miller? I'm sorry, Bob. Mike?
Aye.
Bob Mora?
Aye.
I vote aye. So that is four ayes, one nay. Next item on the agenda is to set a referendum date for this budget. I wanted to share with the group that as of April nineteenth, the governor's executive orders expire. And there is no current provision for legal Zoom or hybrid meetings once the governor's executive orders expire. So we could be in a position to have an in-person meeting only for the budget referendum. The Council of Small Towns has asked the governor to reconsider that and will be asking the legislature to reconsider those provisions at least through this municipal budget season. However, it hasn't happened yet. So Josh, I think you said you had a date in mind.
I do. Given the charter's requirement that the first budget referendum be held before May twenty-fifth, which is a Tuesday, my recommendation is that the first budget referendum be scheduled for Tuesday, May eighteenth. There is nothing else on the town's budget calendar. It does very well with past budget referendum dates, which tend to be somewhere between May sixteenth and May twenty-second.
Okay, and if if we do have, if we, if we do hold an in-person referendum, would would we be setting it up like we did for the elections at the school?
Or? That could be an issue because it would require school to be closed.
Yeah, that's right. On the normal election, they would, but in a referendum, they probably wouldn't.
Yeah, yeah. That said, though, they are, no, they're going back. No, they will still be remote on Wednesdays, I believe, but I'm not positive.
That's, they will be for, I'm not sure in May they will be, but they are right now, they aren't.
So I mean, if if that occurs, we may have to hire some, for lack of a better word, door monitors to to control occupancy in the building.
I just bring it up as something we we should, we're probably going to consider what to do, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point, Bob. Thank you. And at this point, the secret, the Secretary of State has said that referendums do not qualify for the no excuse absentee voting as the law currently stands. So absentee ballots would only be available for those out of town or unable to travel for health reasons.
And that's anybody who's doesn't really want to be in a crowd. So I I think that's, that's, that can be interpreted loose enough that anybody who would like to get one can get one. That's my interpretation. I'm I'm not her.
Yeah, it, yeah, and I'm not the town clerk. I certainly would share my views with her, but okay, that's her decision.
Sandy?
Mike.
If we get to May, the weather will be warm enough that we could leave the trucks outside. And I think you could probably convince the chief to let us use the apparatus bays in lieu of the gymnasium. You might have to line up outside. Hopefully, it won't be raining, but I think there's enough space there if we pull the trucks out to hold a referendum in there if we need to.
That's an excellent thought. Thank you for that. Because it will also allow those who need to be working on site, but not necessarily in the same room to work in the main area and have the voting outside. Excellent thought. Thank you.
No problem. I'm I'm pretty sure that Bruce would go along with that.
Yeah.
Excellent thought. All right. Now, finally, the reason our guests have been here for a long time, the Charter Revision Commission's recommendations. And I want to echo everybody else's comments at the beginning of the meeting that I want to echo everybody else's comments at the beginning of the meeting that we truly appreciate all of your work and your report was well put together and well thought out and very easily to understand. And Gwen, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
Well, thank you very much. And with me here tonight from the commission are John Toomey, Eleanor Georges, and Adam Teller. And what I wanted to do tonight is I, I think that you probably all have questions, so I wanted to leave time for those. So I'm not gonna go through a summary. And because a few of you were at the public hearing also, so you heard the summary already of the changes and you had a chance to look at the report. So all I wanted to do is just go over what we, the structure of what we've done, the timeline and where we're headed. And then open it up to questions. So this process started in October of twenty nineteen when you appointed the commission members and you gave us our charge and that charge had twelve items on it. In addition to those twelve items, we added at least twelve to fifteen more. And so what we have been doing since January first of, of twenty twenty is going over that entire list, item by item. We had our first meeting, January thirtieth of twenty twenty. We had our, our final public hearing, February fourth of this year. We met on the eighteenth to, to talk about the comments that we received at the public hearing and to revise the report based on those public comments. We submitted the report to you on February twenty-fifth. And the whole process is governed by statute. So based on the, on the submission date of the twenty-fifth, you now have till around April ninth or so to set your public hearing. And then after that, you'll have fifteen days after your public hearing to make recommended changes, if you have any, to the report. And then we have thirty days after receiving your recommendations to finalize the report. So, so there's gonna, and so we look forward to the give and take with the selectmen too. I mean, this is, this is a, we want, our, our whole goal is to make this a good, a good set of rules, a livable set of rules that the town of Bolton can live with. And so we're, we are not wedded to what we have here. I mean, we've thought out a lot of these issues and we feel like we have made the proposals that, that we feel are best for the town, but we want to hear the public's input that they're gonna give to you. It's your public hearing and then we want to hear the input that you're going to give back to us. And I'm hoping, I'm looking forward to that conversation that we have about the, about your recommendations. And the other important conversation that I hope to have is going to be about how to structure the questions on the ballot in November. And this is gonna be crucial because some of these issues, there are certain hot topic issues such as the reconfiguration of the Board of Finance. And the changing of the provision about what happens if a budget fails, does that, can the budget be revised upward or downward? Those are two issues that, that perhaps should be standalone issues so that voters have a chance to say yes or no to those and not, if they, if they don't like those, not have all of the other changes, excuse me, go down as well. So, but we also have to walk, there's a fine line there because if we, if we have too many questions on the ballot, people are gonna lose interest, very quickly lose patience. And by the time they get to the sixth question, they're gonna say, ah, I don't care about this anymore. I'm just gonna vote no. So we want to have the right number, we have to figure out what the right number of questions is and how to frame those questions and how to, how to group them properly. So we, we look forward to having that conversation with you too. So at this point, I would just open it up to questions if you have any. And, and I've asked Eleanor and John and Adam to help me out. If, if you all are asking about the reasoning behind any of our decisions, I might not remember why we made certain decisions. So I have asked them to help me out with those.
Excellent. I'm actually gonna start because I have had one. And it's on section ten point two incompatible offices. I'm not understanding the provision that says, other than the town administrator position. Are you saying that the town administrator may be a member of the fire department or may not? It's on page thirteen of your write-up in section ten point two incompatible offices.
Fellow commission members, I believe our intent was to not allow the town administrator to serve in other capacities. Is my memory correct about that?
That's correct.
I'm finding that a bit problematic because our current town administrator, although not a member of the fire department, does hold other town offices and positions. Like the town administrator is currently our town treasurer. And has been open burning official. And I'm not comfortable with excluding them from those kinds of jobs.
Gwen?
Yes.
Just looking back in history, Joyce was a longtime member of the fire department and served as an officer in the fire department for many years. And when you look at the fire department's day staff, as it stands right now, it's pretty good because we have people working from home. But on a regular basis, most of the day staff is already collecting social security. Having a, an individual available daytime in town, whether they're a resident of town or not, the department bylaws allow anyone who's a town resident or works in town full-time to be a member of the department. It would be an advantage to potentially have another individual available daytime. I realize it would take away from their, their duties during that period of time. But I'm sure that they could make up any time that's lost. Should they have to leave for any reason, you know, I'm just looking at the past and, and looking at the future of the community. I think that to exclude that individual would be potentially detrimental to town services. At least for that, that one, you know, I, I, I won't speak to the other hats that Josh wears, but you know, it, it, it's just something that when I read it was troubling to me.
I have to, Mike, if I make sense, Andy, if I may.
Go ahead.
No, I, I, I would concur with, with both of you and on the fire service side, it depends on who your administrator is, but if you have an administrator who is both capable to assist in that capacity, I think it's not allowing it to happen is a disservice to the community. And we've asked our administrators on and off to do even for a short period of time, a different, wear that different hat. Sandy pointed out two of them and they're not continual, but they occur. Things happen and we have to the board, the first selectman has to have the ability, the flexibility to have that person take that. So I think I, I, I really think that, that, that's one that should be modified that would allow greater flexibility for the administrator. Cause I, I really don't see a an issue where the administrator is put into a position where that's gonna impact his decision, his or her decision based on budgeting or, or, or they're doing their job properly. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from board members for the Charter Revision Commission?
I have, I have one. When it comes to the, the synopsis that you put out, what is the final, your final plan for the Board of Finance? Elected three and three, two and two, elected, non-elected, how does it actually play out completely?
Two members would be appointed by the Board of Selectmen, including the first selectman or his or her designee. Two members appointed by the Board of Education. And three members to be elected by the public.
All right. Now, the, the two people from each board, are they members of that board or can they be people selected from outside the board?
Members of the board.
Okay. Okay. So the final is, oh, the three remaining are elected, not appointed at large.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and we made that change as a result of public comment at the public hearing. People felt that we originally planned three from Board of Selectmen, two from Board of Ed, two appointed. Three, five, and but we've, but people said, why are you weighting it in favor of the Board of Selectmen? And people also said, you're taking away control from the public. So we made that adjustment taking, so it's two, 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 and three. Putting a choice back in the public's hands and taking that, that appearance of weight off of the Board of Selectmen.
It's a good compromise. I, I can understand that.
It is a good compromise. I'm, I also still don't understand how minority representation would work. Does it require that the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Education select one from each political party?
Adam, you've been great on that. Would you like to address that?
No, the only requirement is that they not both be the same political party.
That they not both be the same. So it could be
From each board, there has to be, you can, you can't name two people from one party. You can name one unaffiliated and one Republican, one Republican, one Democrat, one Democrat. And one unaffiliated, two unaffiliates, but you can't name two Republicans or two Democrats or two Green Party people. Or two Working Families Party people. And so by definition, you end up with a diverse board. Or a not, a not overly.
Right.
You don't have, you don't have more than five people of one party.
You always have a minority representation.
Exactly.
What I want to ask is why make any changes at all?
We, one of the eleven original items that from the charge from your board was to look at the role of the Board of Finance. And to discuss whether any changes should be made. So we felt that that was a direction to examine whether there were issues with the current situation and the, go ahead, Bob. Were you gonna say something else?
Yeah, what were the issues? When I was born, there's a problem, you fix it. Barbara said something a few weeks ago. She said something to that, that broke. Why try to fix it? You're a firm man, him.
Well, what we, what we heard, we, we talked to a lot of different people. We got a lot of different perspectives. And what we heard was that there's a lot of redundancy in the process, that there is not a coming together of minds until very late in the process. And this proposed change puts in place a system where there's Board of Education members, Board of Select members, and these three appointed, elected people sitting at the table right from the beginning, expressing what their needs are. And going through the whole budgets process together. And one of the examples that I think it, it kind of illustrates this well is your discussion that you had a little bit earlier where Kim asked the question, well, what happens if we decide a little bit later that we're going to get into this other health insurance system? Are we then, what do we do about the Board of Finance? And then the question, the, the answer was, well, you're gonna have to send a letter to the Board of Finance. With this new combined finance committee, that is, everybody is going to be aware of that potential change and that's, nobody's going to have to notify anybody else because the group is going to be knowing that as you're gonna be carrying that, that decision-making process through the whole, through the whole budget-making process.
Well, that implies that the representatives from the Board of Education have some authority or power. And they don't really, unless it's been prior approval by the whole Board of Education. So I don't, I don't understand.
Can I?
Mike, go ahead.
I, I was one of the ones that pushed this. And, and the reason I, I, I don't like saying it because it, it could offend members of the Board of Finance, but the Board of Finance it comes down to the only role they serve right now is to set the mill rate. They take X amount of dollars from one budget or another budget without any real working knowledge of the individual budgets. There is one member that sits in on almost everything right now and, and has much more information than previous Board of Finance members, but the Board of Finance serves only the function of setting the mill rate or setting the bottom line for the taxpayers to vote on. Because there is really no intimate knowledge of either budget. And doing what you're doing now allows that intimate knowledge from two members of the Board of Ed and two members of the Board of Selectmen to, to be at those meetings to give that knowledge for the discussions on where changes should be made in the overall budget. The three people from town bring the in, the taxpayers' point of view. There's nothing that says that I have to bring in the, if I was a member, a person appointed. I don't have to support the Board of Selectmen's views as a whole as to what should happen to the budget. I'm there to be an information source for one thing and a more informed individual on setting the overall budget. And, you know, right from the beginning, I, there are several boards and commissions in town that, that I personally believe should go by the wayside. They don't serve a big function anymore. They may have thirty or forty years ago, but with town staff today and everything else, many of those boards may not need to exist. But this one does not serve a real function as it is right now. Other than to say, I think we should take fifty thousand from the town and I think we should take fifty thousand from the Board of Ed with really no intimate knowledge of the budget to make that decision on. And this brings that intimate knowledge to that discussion. And that, that was the reason why I brought it up. And, and I take full credit for bringing that up and, and pushing towards it because I do believe that as it stands, it it doesn't function at all.
Thanks a lot.
I, I'm sorry, and I said, I, I felt that, but, but it is the truth. The, the Board of Finance doesn't have the intimate knowledge that it needs to make an informed decision on where cuts or additions should be made. You don't have the longstanding history of the budget process. You get a document at the end and look at it strictly with the bottom line as a focal point. And, and I hate to say that, but that's my opinion of how the Board of Finance functions now. It may not have forty years ago. It may have been a functioning board that had some real intimate knowledge and, and did things. But as it stands now, it does nothing but set the bottom line. And in order to set the bottom line, they make cuts or they make additions without, like I said, the necessary knowledge to do that. And, and I apologize to anybody that is or has been on the Board of Finance. That's my opinion.
Bob Mora?
Thank you. This just points out one thing that this particular i- item is probably one that will, that will be discussed the most and, and have the most issues. One, as, as I listened to this and I thought about it myself, one of the things that may make the whole process more acceptable and I think efficient. Remember, you have to think back, the board, the Board of Finance originally was a five-member board. And a while ago, it was expanded to seven. Back when they did that, they did have more, if you will, more movement as to what they could do and what, and not do. But now their process is really, okay, we're what's the, what are the bottom numbers for these various board and going forward? If the board were to be, and I'm sorry I didn't bring this up the last time because my brain never thought of it till recently, but if it were a, a five, back again, five-member board, three elected, one appointed from the Board of Selectmen, one appointed from the Board of Ed. three elected, one appointed from the Board of Selectmen, one appointed for, from the Board of Ed, the intact would be the same. You would still have input from both boards continual with the Board of Finance, and the majority makeup of the Board of Finance would be elected by the public. And that might, might be a, uh, a, a compromise to consider, because I really don't, I, I can't see the need for a seven-member board, uh, when you're having this, this input right there in decision-making.
The, the only thing that I could say to that, Bob, is that you would more than likely have the chairman of the Board of, uh, the Board of Ed and the first selectman sitting on the Board of Finance. And potentially, I think the discussion would be better with a couple of people there to expand that discussion. Uh, because there are a lot of things that come up now that one of us didn't think of, that the other does. And having two people there from, from each of the major boards would it only enhance the discussions that would be had, and, and bring more information to them, and, and probably make the bottom line that the town sets a more appropriate bottom line. And, and not saying that one board has been getting more or less, and I don't care about all of that. I just think that the, uh, you know, like I said, the, the Board of Finance sets the bottom line and doesn't have the adequate, doesn't have adequate information to do that. And I think having it this way, the way that the Charter Revision Commission has proposed now is, uh, I'm in, I'm happy with that. I, I think you've, you've solved the problem that I, that I identified to myself i- in a very good way. So I'm, I'm very happy with the compromise that you've come up with.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, any other questions for the Charter Revision Commission? John, are you waiting? Go ahead, Kim.
I just have a quick comment. So, I wasn't sure if this mattered, because it's just commentary, but in section three point five, issue two, when it's talking about having the Board of, uh, Selectmen be seven members, it says a comment about, um, uh, because they have to have three members serve on the Finance Committee, but above that, they changed it to two. So I didn't know if they just need to change that or not.
Good catch.
Um, and the only other que, I had two other questions, actually. One is on eight point five, section two, when it's talking about not changing it to have, um, a limited number of referendums. So, what happened? Like, we could just have ten of them, if it came to that, is that what would happen?
That's what happens, you, you operate off the previous year's budget until such time as the new budget is-
New budget passes.
Okay. Craziness, all right.
And there are some towns who have a provision that says after X number, you just stop having referendums and operate with last year's budget.
Yep, yep, okay.
John Toomey?
Um, the, my, I'm like, the, I agree with your reasoning, and that was pretty much my reasoning too. Um, two of us on the Charter Revision Commission have been former members of the Board of Finance, including, uh, Jim, who was a chair. Um, I've been watching the Board of Finance for over fifty years. Um, I've never been really that pleased with how it functions. And, uh, Bob, um, you hold a unique position because you're on both boards, and you know how, what the Board of, uh, Board of Selectmen need. Well, what I found, um, in those years, those four and a half years that I was on the Finance Board, was that, um, I, when I, the first budget cycle, I heard that there was budget meetings for both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. I started going, and I realized, I, I was, they wondered why I was there. Um, that, I guess, because it was such an anomaly for Board of Finance members to actually show up at a Board of Selectmen or a Board of Education meeting to find out why people wanted, why each board wanted to spend the money on certain items. And I got to learn why. And, uh, one of the re, one of the main things that I discovered in that process was the year that they wanted to have all-day kindergarten. And everybody on the Board of Finance didn't understand it. So what I did, um, since I'd been there and listened to the Board of Education determine why they wanted it, I sat in on kindergarten twice. That is not our father's kindergarten at all, ten years ago.
Yep.
Um, and I saw the reason for why they needed it. Those kids were, uh, doing math and reading at first and second grade levels. Like, I was never that, you know, I was still playing with blocks and sand.
Learning to tie my shoes.
But, you know, and I'm glad that they finally made it. Um, you know, over the years, we've had many years where there's been two, three, four, I think there's been five referendums. Um, and one of the, um, probably the proudest thing that I've ever done is, when I was Chair of the Bolton Democrats, was signing the letter saying Joe Fleming, former principal of Bolton High, to be on the Board of Finance. And what that proved over those years was that there was actually somebody that understood what the Board of Education needed, and was able to explain to the people on the Board of Finance how it functions, what was necessary. And those years, we had one referendum, once Joe was on the Board of Finance. Um, to have somebody with experience there made such a difference. And we actually haven't had that big of a problem since then. We've had two and three, usually, and last few, a few times, we've had one, not counting last year. Um, but that was the rationale why we, why we thought, but Jim and I both thought that it was important to really change it, because there was nobody from the Board of Selectmen, and no one hardly from the Board of, of educate, I'm sorry, nobody from the Board of Finance was going to either one of those two boards. Except occasionally, the chairmans would show up at some of the meetings. Um, and that seems to be true, I've gone through the attendance for both Board of Ed and Board of Selectmen meetings for the budget, for the budgets for the last two, three years. The chair shows up occasionally, not always. And usually, no one else on the Board of Finance shows up to either one. And it's that process is get somebody that knows what, what it is, sit on a Finance Committee, do the same exact work. We just, we just saw the budget from the Board of Selectmen. If somebody else had been here from a different, from the Board of Finance besides Bob, and thank God you're here. But that makes it so that people on the Board of Finance could have understood why this money needs to be spent, for whatever reason, from both boards. And that, that's pretty much why we, we decided what we decided to do. Um, all, for every step of the way, the Board of Finance doesn't seem to have been privy to what's been going on on, on a monthly basis, through the entire budget cycle from late November to almost, pretty much almost April. And I think having people that understand the budget from the Selectmen, the budget from the finance, uh, education. And another reason, I want to get rid of a third board, because I can't keep the three streets when I'm talking. But that, that's just me.
Okay, John, I, I want to move on here. Is there any other questions?
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Gwen?
May I please ask Kim to clarify the error that she found in the report, because I didn't catch that.
Okay, let me, let me actually go right to the thing I have it open, I just didn't have it up, okay. Um, so, it's section three point five. It says issue two. So, Commission's recommendation, the number four, blah, blah, two. So the second sentence says, "The reconfiguration of the Board and Finance into a seven-member Finance Committee will mean a greater time commitment for the three members." But you changed it to two.
Yes, okay, yes, you're right. Yep, thank you, I didn't, I didn't make a change. Okay, thank, thank you very much, Kim.
Yeah, no, I didn't know if it mattered, since it was commentary, but I figured I would. I just happen to pop out in my head.
Yep, thank you.
That's a good thing to clarify, because if it's confusing you, it'll confuse fifty other people, so. Thank you for that. Um, our next step is to set our Board of Selectmen hearing. Um, and, uh, Josh, I think we had a date in mind.
We do, Tuesday, March twenty-third, that's two weeks before the next Board of Selectmen meeting. So that will give us, uh, the perfect amount of time between that public hearing and the date in which we can act to send, uh, a list of proposed changes back to the Charter Revision Commission.
Tuesday, Thursday, Josh?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay.
Tuesday, March twenty-third.
Tuesday's the only day of the week that's not taken up with other meetings, so.
That's kind of why we picked it.
Thank you.
It's also a night that, uh, I apologize for moving things around, I lost my pen. Um, it's also the only night that town doesn't have a lot of other scheduled meetings, so. So Tuesday, March twenty-third at seven o'clock, that will be a public hearing via Zoom. And we'll hopefully get something up on the website. Um, Gwen, do you have an, um, estimated time of delivery for the, um, proposed language?
No. It's a, it's a, that's a, it's an arduous process. Are you, are you hoping to have it before the public hearing?
Um, yes.
Wouldn't that, that, isn't that gonna make the potential of redoing all of that again?
Yeah.
If it doesn't, if we make changes or, or whatever?
Well, that's true, too. That is very true as, as well. Um, and you know what, Mike, based on the, um, facial expressions I saw from the Charter Revision Commission, I'm going to withdraw my request for having that language.
I was just gonna say, dream on.
I, I see chuckles and a terrible grimace from Gwen.
Yeah, and Mike does make a good point that I hadn't, um, thought about, that if we do make recommended changes, it effectively negates a lot of work that we've just put pressure on to happen. So, we've got an excellent summary, we've got an excellent, um, write-up of the decision process, and I think we can comfortably move forward with that. And if we need to, um, do some language adjusting, um, I think hopefully we can agree with the Commission that will do that with, as part of the question-writing process.
Good, yes, and you will have ample time to be able to review that after we get it done. And we do plan to start that, the drafting process, soon, even before the hearing, but we don't think we'll have to have it done before the hearing. But we, we're just, and if we have to change it, we might have to change, but we, but we, just such a long, hard process that we will, we were going to get started on it soon.
Well, you, it already proved that you can handle a long, hard, arduous process. So, um, I don't want to make your life any more difficult than it has to be. Um, anything else for Charter Revision before we allow them to go about their business? Okay, thank you, folks, you're welcome to stay. Um, we won't be offended should you choose to go about your business.
All right, I'm gonna say goodnight, and thank you very much for having us, and we'll be back-
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Um, next on the list is Cemetery Services Proposal.
We have to set the public hearing date, we didn't vote on that.
Oh, sorry, we did not vote on that, you are correct, thank you, Bob. Um, are you making a motion to-
Yes, ma'am, I am, I'm making a motion to be held March twenty-third via Zoom at, uh, at seven PM, the time we're looking to do. So that'll be my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Kim seconded, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions, that's unanimous. Um, our public hearing will be Tuesday, March twenty-third at seven PM via Zoom. Um, next on the list is the Cemetery Care Services Proposal. Um, we did submit an RFP. Um, unfortunately, we got one respondent who was our current provider.
Um, but given that that contract needs to begin in April before, and, and technically would take effect before we next meet, um, I, I know it's, it's not necessarily the kind of response or the volume of response, at least, that we wanted to receive back on this RFP. Um, but right now, the rates are level to last year. I do believe that after we had a couple of conversations with them um, towards the beginning of last year's cycle, that we did see some level of improvement, albeit there's still room for more. Um, but I would recommend that we approve this contract and continue to have discussions about future changes. And the contract is on your screen.
So it's not even a whole-year contract?
Contract, yeah.
That's good.
This is very standard.
Yeah.
Ten months, sorry.
Yeah, I, I just mean, we're not locked in for five years with these people. It's a single year, they don't improve, we'll take it on, do it ourselves.
That's right.
All right, is there a motion to approve the contract for April first to November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one?
Reluctantly, I will-
Make a motion.
Okay, Kim, you can have it, I'll second it.
All right.
Yeah, just what I want my name on.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I, I-
Better than a gravestone.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, there you go.
Um, so it's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Josh, is this a pretty standard rate?
We didn't get any comparison in, back from, from proposals. Um, so it's hard to say industry-wide if this is a standard rate, but this is a level rate from what we've seen the past two years, so there's no change.
It's kind of amazing that something like this would stay flat for two years, so.
Seems like a lot of money.
Yes, it is, but.
I would venture that somebody looking for a small business who doesn't mind that type of work could, uh, function very well.
Hey, Bob, put it in perspective. Uh, a friend of mine just passed away, and he'd be buried in a Jewish cemetery in the town of Ellington. Relatively small, and their, their, uh, association maintains it. They charge five thousand dollars per burial. So, sufficient funds to operate, so, yeah.
Is that in addition to the lot costs?
Uh, yeah.
Wow.
Right.
How much did you say?
Five thousand.
Five.
Five thousand.
And, we're, I guess, a typical talking with folks around, it's, it's about a grand or like that for your typical, a typical burial. So, a lot of, a lot of that is what's it cost to maintain? And I, obviously, an Elijah operation that does it can do it, a small operation, uh, it can go berserk, but, yeah. But that doesn't, you know, I, I think this makes sense, but as Mike said, we have this time to really look at it and, and, and really study it to see if, if in fact we want to simply do it ourselves with, with a, a minimal amount of subcontracting involved.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
You're very welcome. I hate to shock you, but that blew my mind when I heard that.
I told my wife to put my ashes in the lawn spreader and run it around my property. That way, no matter who buys it when I'm dead, I still hear.
Love it. Okay, um, because this is a contract, I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Um, again, is the way people appear on my screen. Bob DiPietro?
Aye.
Mike Aramita?
Aye.
Bob Mora?
Aye.
Kim Miller?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that is unanimous. So we will get that contract executed. Next is, um, a request by the tax collector to issue a disability benefit to the resident of Two Shoddy Mill Road. And Josh, uh, oh, there's the- the resident of Two Shoddy Mill Road. And Josh, oh, there's the letter. Thank you.
No problem. This is not something that we see very often, but it is a standard procedure. And it's something that certainly Lori knows quite a bit about with all her years in the tax office. So it's a recommendation that we apply the 100% disability benefit to Noah Brown of Two Shoddy Mill Road's account. And, and that, and this will ultimately lower or refund, as well as refund, the amounts of money that he's paid into the town's property taxes over the past several years.
And it totals about $1,300, so.
I'll move, I'll move that we move forward in a, in a positive vote for was naming him as a.
Noah Brown.
Noah Brown, yeah.
As permanently disabled.
Is there a second?
Oh, second, yeah.
Lip, Bob, second.
Thank you, Bob DiPietro. All right, any discussion? Again, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Bob DiPietro?
Aye.
Mike Aramita?
Aye.
Bob Mora?
Aye.
Kim Miller?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so that is unanimous. The next is the release of an involuntary lien at 20-6 Old Town Road in Vernon. This is an interesting situation. Some of you have been in Bolton for a long time. May remember that Ilvie Cannon was, at one point, our Social Services Director. Ilvie was the individual who placed the lien on this property. There is nothing in the town's records that we could find that indicates why the lien was placed on the property. My, I guess, wild guess, is that someone associated with the property received some sort of social assistance, assistance, or social welfare assistance. And as a result, a lien was put on property. Total supposition, I have no facts. However, they are now trying to sell this property. And by the way, the lien does not state a monetary amount. So we can't say that by the payment of $300, we'll release the lien because the lien could have been for 100 and it could have been for much more than that. I don't know. So this is where we are. The lien is dated December 2nd, 1991. If I had to guess, I would say Bob Mora might have been first selectman. Do you have any recollection?
I absolutely none. Zero. I, I read this thing. I looked at it. I was trying to figure out how the hell it just happened. And, no, I'll tell you.
It was either you or me, Bob, that was first selectman then.
All right, you want, you want to take the hit on it?
It was one of the two of us.
I know it wasn't me.
I only remember because I was a deputy chief at that point and the guys told me if you don't give up that other thing, we're going to transfer shifts. Because they said I was always crazy about what was going on in town here, so.
Right, so, right, no, that, it, your, your analysis is probably right. But no one knows the amount or that was ever put in there. And with that, I would say it's time to release the lien.
And was that your motion?
Passed away. Is that, oh, sorry. I assume that person's passed away.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we don't know who that person is. We only know the lien is on the property.
Not the person.
Okay.
So.
And it doesn't have to say who the lien holder is?
Well, the lien holder is the town of Bolton.
Oh, 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 got it, okay.
And the lien is on the property. Not.
Got it.
A, not an, it's not against an individual.
Okay, I got it.
So Bob, was that, Bob Mora, was that a motion?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay, I'm going to ask Mike Aramita to.
I've got my hand up already.
Um, all right, any other discussion? All right. I'm sorry?
Contact you over?
I did, and she had no recollection.
Oh, okay.
That's how I got a fair number of my facts, but so since this is something that I'm going to have to swear to, I'm also going to do a roll call vote. Have I lost Bob DiPietro?
No.
Thank you. Thank you. Bob DiPietro, you're first on my list. Aye. Mike Aramita?
Aye.
Bob Mora?
Aye.
Kim Miller?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so that is unanimous. And Josh, I can stop tomorrow and sign this at the town office.
Excellent. It'll be there for you.
Thank you. First selectmen's report. This meeting seems to be never-ending tonight, following our last meeting that was over and a half an hour. COVID-19, we are up to 228 cases. Last week, on Thursday, we dropped from a red town to a yellow town. We're the only yellow town in our area, so our case spread is finally appearing to be under control. So I'm pretty happy about that. And we've been at 228 since, I think, last Friday, so it's looking much better than when we doubled our cases in seven weeks. As I mentioned earlier, the bond refunding has been completed. The cash has been moved to the old bondholders and back through our Finance Department. There was no extra cash in this refunding. It was just the costs of refunding and the retirement and refinancing of the bonds. But we do have, they were issued at 2% face value and our total savings after costs is approximately $160,000. So it was a good move for the town. And other, on our administrator's search, I'll be sending out an update probably tomorrow to the Board of Selectmen members on where we stand on that. And I think that's it. Josh?
Muted. So Sandy just touched upon the administrator's search. As for my goals, we, we have continued conversations on web design fixes and overhauls with considering, especially considering making it a compliant. And I am happy to say that we will have plenty of money in place in order to, one thing that I, I had specifically talked about doing with the supervisors is having a treatment and expectation-setting session and to have an outside facilitator be, be able to come in and help to manage that. So the new administrator coming in will have an opportunity right at the get-go to have the opportunity to bring in somebody from the outside to have this conversation. And I think that will really help them make some bonds, make some connections from the outset and make sure that they are working together with those supervisors as a cohesive team. We've completed the full staff training on diversity and inclusion, as you know. Work continues to go on with developing standard operating procedures. I hope to have some of those in front of you before I take my leave, but in any case, that work will of course continue under the person who comes next in this role. We have continued to have conversations with the UConn students who are developing schematics for a town hall facility or, or draft of schematics for a town hall facility at this point in time. And although it's slow, I am very happy to say that the HR Subcommittee at each meeting that it's had since the new personnel policies have been introduced has made a point of looking over at least a few pages of the new personnel, proposed personnel policies at those meetings. And I, I'm, I'm confident with the, the comments that have been received so far that that will be a very positive change as opposed to the 1993 edition that had been last adopted. Beyond that, for tonight's commentary, forbid, under bids and RFPs, I will say that we have now collected and, and completed collection on all banking RFPs. You'll have more information about that in the near future, once we've had the opportunity to really explore the depths of all of those proposals. You heard back about the Cemetery Services RFP and proposal, proposal singular that we received back. And Sandy made a point at the beginning of mentioning, under the facilities report, that the Bolton Heritage Farm Commission has accepted a proposal out of three different proposals that were sent to it regarding the historic signage at the Heritage Farm. And with that, I know it's been a very long night, so I'm going to hold my report there. But if anybody has questions about specific items, you can either ask now or you can always send me an email or give me a ring.
I think everybody else is as fried as I feel.
Yep, is it time for that motion?
It is time for that motion, Mike.
I make it.
All right, Mike's moved to adjourn. Is there, Bob DiPietro seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, that's unanimous. I think Kim didn't vote. Are you voting yes?
All right, you know what? I was on mute. I said aye, but.
Okay.
She's already heading for the door.
All right.
About the Memorial Day at the next meeting?
Uh, yes.
It's puppy.
Hopefully, we will have more information from what other towns are doing at that point.
Okay.
All right. Okay. We are adjourned. I will see you all on March 23rd for our hearing. In the meantime, I think that's going to be a listening night, but if you have questions, you want us to check with the Charter Revision Commission on, before then, please feel free to send those over to Josh. With that, good night, all.
Night.
Thank you. Good night.